Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town Board of the Town of Austin Town Hall Meeting for Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we're going to kick it off with a few announcements. So we're back on Zoom. Thanks to recent legislation passed by New York State and signed by Governor Kathy Hochul. Hopefully, this continues to be easily accessible to everyone, and it does make it easier for us from a technical standpoint, too. So we appreciate everybody's patience in coming back to Zoom and hopefully, you know, we can look forward to a future when this is an option that we can use, but not something that makes it just safer for us. Tomorrow, September 22nd is a wonderful day to experience the great outdoors. It's International Car Free Day. So it's your last chance today to take the pledge to go car-free or car-light at 511nyrideshare.org. This is all about changing habits. So hopefully, after practicing for one day, you'll get a taste of what it's like to reduce your everyday, reduce your dependence on single occupancy, gas-powered automobiles during your everyday routines, so that you can consider making car-free or car-light not a once-a-year occurrence. Thank you so much to our local businesses, Mike Risco Music, Sinks and Kill Brewery, Bob's Army Navy, Re-Center Space, Bigfoot Creamery, The Tasty Table, Speak Easy 10562, and Family Veterinary Care for offering discounts and benefits to those going car-free. The town is also participating in incentives by offering free electric vehicle or free car charging at our EV charging stations at Angle Rider and Cedar Lane Parks all day tomorrow. Please also stop by the Austin Community Center this week to visit the 511 New York Ride Share kiosk, which can help you find car-free or car-light solutions for your commute on a regular basis. And this includes such things as van pool, ride share, first and last mile options to get you to the train station without having to take your car and other things. So check it out. It's very cool and there's like fun little avatars and things like that to make it fun for kids to help you adults learn how to be more energy-friendly and less reliant on those fossil fuels. For a fun way to end Car Free Day, join up for a community bike ride tomorrow afternoon at 5:30 PM, starting at the Briar Cliff Manor parking lot near the North County Trail Access. Sign up at westchesterpsychoclub.org. And thanks to my fantastic neighbor Kate Marshall for helping to put this community bike ride together. Huge shout out to our Car Free Day planning team who has been hard at work since July organizing our third year of offerings. Green Austin Chairperson Suzie Ross, Maddie Zahatch, and Jamie Hoffman from the Village Manager's Office and in the Austin Village, Village of Austin, Victoria Cafarelli from my office in the Town of Austin, Acacia Moriello from Local Blue Solutions, Mike and Miriam Risco, and of course, Eliana, Modu, and Ella from 511 New York Ride Share. Also, as part of this Car Free Week, we will have a visit from a bike-share company, Bowwagon, at the Farmer's Market this Saturday at Market Square. So plan to check it out. Meanwhile, I will be polishing up my walking shoes and hopefully getting air in my bicycle tires for tomorrow. See you around town in the open, fresh air. Thank you to everyone for your patience yesterday and today as we navigate some technical difficulties with the town and Village of Austin's email system for the past few days. If you require immediate attention and have been trying to email, please call our town offices. Our website is up and running and can provide you with direct office numbers for all our town departments. We have also posted direct phone numbers on our, on our social media pages to make it as easy as possible to contact us. Otherwise, we will respond to emails as soon as these technical difficulties have been resolved. And we are hearing that at least department heads will have access to emails tomorrow, and this was just it. Somehow, it seems that the leaves are already starting to fall, falling being the operative word, as tomorrow, I think, might be the first day. Wasn't it just, or maybe it's today? I can't even remember what the day is. Anyway, so I think it was just the beginning of summer when I looked around, but apparently it's already fall. So please remember, however, that the gas-powered leaf blower ban in the Town of Austin remains in effect through the end of September, September 30th, to be exact. So still, you have about a week and a half to go without those. Please visit the town's website for a quick and easy download summarizing the town's leaf blower legislation. Think about loving them and leafing them and mulching in place as a better option. We're continuing to look for feedback on the town's new comprehensive plan entitled Sustainable Austining. Speaking of sustainable practices, such as not using your gas-powered leaf blower. The comprehensive plan is outlined into specific themes with draft goals, objectives, and strategies. The town is interested in understanding the public's planning priorities. Please visit the project website at sustainableosnning.com to complete a survey that shares these draft objectives, which are specific to carrying at the theme areas and goals. Please take a moment to read each objective and then give us your priorities as to which objectives you would like to see the town focus on accomplishing in the near term. We look forward to sharing the full draft of the plan with the public in the near future. Reminder, the first half of school taxes for the Austin and Briar Cliff School Districts are due, is due, the first half is due by September 30th. If you pay your taxes directly as opposed to having them paid by a mortgage escrow account, please make sure to get your payment in on time. You can pay your taxes online. It's super easy. By mail, just remember your envelope needs to have a postmark on September 30th or by September 30th to be considered timely, or in person at our offices at 16 Croton Avenue from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. The tax office will also be open until 6:00 PM on Tuesday, September 30th, to make it super easy for you to get them in on time. You can also drop your envelope with payment in the dedicated mail slot at the Austin Post Office, which gets delivered to our offices directly as opposed to going through white planes the following day. Just don't forget, you still have to put a stamp on it if it goes in one of the post office boxes. Also, please be wary of online bill pay from your bank, because these payments are not postmarked. And if they are not received in our office by the deadline, you will be assessed a penalty. Please instead consider paying your bill directly through our online payment feature on our website. We also know that with many people heading back to the office, it may be more challenging to get your local errands done during the work week. So if you need help getting your payment to us or have any questions at all, please call 914-762-8790 to speak to our very friendly Receiver of Taxes Honorable Holly Perlowitz and her team, who will be happy to help in any way they can, and that is for sure. With that, I ask my colleagues if anybody has anything to add. And seeing no heads shaking in the up and down direction, I am going to say, yeah. So, without further ado, we will begin our Town Hall Meeting with our very large audience, and we can't wait to talk to all of you. The good news is that with our Zoom meetings, it's really easy to see us all, and you can watch us all on YouTube in the not-too-distant future and watch these meetings and really get a lot of very helpful information about what's happening in the town. And hopefully, people will be doing that. And if you're watching us on YouTube, thank you. Please give us a big thumbs up at the end or post your comments or send us an email, which we will hopefully get any by tomorrow. Tonight, we're starting our Town Hall Meeting with a discussion on the town's allocation of funding under the American Rescue Plan Act. Ah ha, I see that we were just, once again, we seem to have Councilwoman Feldman is in the attendees box. Are you gonna let her in? I don't know what happened. Okay.
Yeah, she's, she's moving.
She's moving. Okay, moving and grouping. Okay, Councilwoman Feldman, before I move on, pastor announcements. It seems like maybe we're having some technical difficulties. Did you have anything to add to announcements before we move into our Town Hall? Are you there?
I'm here.
And, and I think that's enough.
That.
Okay, I'm gonna say that's.
Okay, I don't right now. Thank you.
Okay, okay, sorry. I didn't, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just want to make sure you had an opportunity. Good?
Yeah, I'm just having technical difficulties, but I think I have it worked out now.
Fantastic. Okay. Okay, so we're starting our Town Hall Meeting with a discussion on the town's allocation of funding under the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA. ARPA is the federal spending bill which set forth funding to assist Americans in recovering from the COVID-19 pandemic. One of the primary elements of ARPA was funding to states and local governments, governments, which is very necessary as we continue to recover from the pandemic and continue to be affected by it. I'm going to turn it over to Victoria Cafarelli to provide some background on the parameters of the ARPA funding to lay out some initial ideas that we have had on the staff level for uses, for use of these funds. We also have with us this evening Captain Nick Franzoso of Austin Volunteer Ambulance Corps to share a specific request from Ovac for some of the town's ARPA funding to assist with their vaccination and testing efforts for their, for our community. Obviously, that seems like it would very well align with what the purposes, purpose of these, these funds are. After this presentation and the board's discussion, we will also open it up to members of the public for comments and questions. We also have a Q and A function open on this webinar, so feel free to submit your questions that way as well, and we will try to get to all of them. So with that, I turn it over to the fantastic Victoria Cafarelli. Take it away.
Much. Okay, let me just pull up this presentation. Sorry, you're getting a little preview of later. Okay, yes, so the American Rescue Plan Act. So, as you see here, so for the ARPA coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, the Town of Austining, Town of Austining's allocation is $560,203.42, to be exact. We received our first allocation, which was 50% of that amount this past summer, and we anticipate receiving our second allocation in summer 2022. It's really great. We're receiving these funds, but there are some restrictions on how they can be used. So there are four main buckets that this funding can be used for. First, responding to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. Premium pay for eligible workers in essential fields. Revenue loss for government services. And water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure projects. And generally speaking, the funds can be used to cover allowable expenses that were incurred March 3rd, 2021, or later. And also, I just want to note that the amount that's listed there is the allocation just for the Town of Austining. The villages of Austining and Briar Cliff have also received allocations, but that is not part of, part of this discussion. That is up to their governments to make some decisions about. Okay, so when does the money need to be spent? The deadline to obligate funds or issue purchase orders and cumber the funds is December 31st, 2024, and the deadline to spend the funds is December 31st, 2026. So although we did just receive this funding, we do have quite a, quite a bit of time to spend it and determine how we're going to use it. We are required to provide annual reports every year, and our first report will be due October 31st for any, any funds that were spent in the prior fiscal year, which is, which is October 1st through September 30th of each year. And do projects need pre-approval? No, we do not need to submit our projects for pre-approval, but we do have to make sure that we're complying with the Treasury guidelines, which is a little bit of a moving target right now, since the funding was just released. And we also have to obviously follow the reporting requirements every year. If, for whatever reason, we decided to get a little creative with the funding and maybe on the fence a little bit about if it was eligible or not, if the Treasury does say it as, hey, this doesn't quite fit with what our guidelines are, we do have an opportunity to sort of justify why we made those expenses. So there is a little bit of wiggle room, but it definitely is a developing situation as the Treasury starts to continue to release guidelines on how these funds can be spent.
And just to interrupt for one second, right now, as I understand it, they're still draft guidelines.
Yes, it's like.
Not finalized yet. So guidelines we have are draft guidelines.
Yes, but we do have these general buckets of these general descriptions for how the funds can be spent. So there is some, some, some guidance that we can start working with and things that are, you know, automatic checks. Okay, so these are some of the, the items that we've identified on the staff level for potential ways to spend the town's allocation, which again is a little over $560,000. The first thing that we did, again, trying to look for those very easy checkboxes, was our controller followed the Treasury guidelines for the calculation for lost revenue. And it's a little bit complicated. It's not quite a X minus Y situation of what the lost revenue looks like, but our wonderful controller Dale Brennan calculated that our lost revenue is approximately $40,000. So we can sort of right off the bat allocate $40,000 back into our operating budget for revenue that we lost as a result of the pandemic. Additionally, as you know, we sort of have described, the guidelines are a little, like I said, a moving target and something that might be a little challenging to, to, to follow and keep on top of. So we can also spend some of the funds on hiring an administrator or consultant or somebody to assist us to make sure that we're following all of the guidelines as they come out. And we actually have spoken to our auditors, PKF O'Connor Davies, and they are able to provide this service, which we think would be really beneficial for our in-house finance teams to make sure that we're really following the guidelines as they come out and not missing anything. Third, I'm going to touch on a little bit, but then the, the fourth item on the list here is us, some, some sewer infrastructure work that we've identified that needs to be, or would be very helpful for it to be done, is a SCADA system for sewer lift stations, which is essentially a monitoring system to monitor how the sewer lift stations are functioning. So this would be very helpful to our highway department so that they can identify problems sort of just as or almost before they start happening and can respond to those situations. So we don't get into any difficult situations with overflows or clogs or anything that we don't want to have happen at our sewer lift stations. So we spoke to Water Superintendent Andy Tease, who has implemented these similar systems for the water infrastructure in the village and some sewer infrastructure in the village. And he estimated for us that if we were to implement this SCADA system for our sewer lift stations, it would be approximately $300,000. Then I just want to note that all of these things totaled together does not total our allocation quite yet. So like I said at the beginning, we do have some time to spend this money. And something else that we have started discussing, but have a little, some reservations on, is that we can also use this money to assist our local businesses or perhaps our local nonprofits with recovery from, from COVID. It would essentially be the town providing grants to these entities for, for a whole variety of different types of assistance, whether it be capital improvements or services to people or, you know, any, anything that falls within the guidelines. But again, because the reporting requirements are very strict for these federal funds, there are some concerns that giving this money to other organizations might be a little challenging to monitor and keep track of, and we may have to end up spending more money on an administrator or somebody to help us make sure that the funds are really being spent the way that they should be. So that's something I just want to throw out into the conversation. And then last but not least, we'll go back to our third item for the Austin Volunteer Ambulance Corps. We did, the town and the village of Austining received a request from Nick Franzoso that in the amount of $208,000 essentially to continue their testing and vaccination program for another six months. So what we have listed here is half of that amount that's been requested, figuring that, you know, the village of Austining would be able to contribute to this request as well with some of their allocation. So I guess I can turn it over to Nick unless the board has any questions before we do so. No, maybe, okay.
Anybody have any questions? Let's, why don't we let Nick just sort of chime in a little bit about, about his request and what they've been doing to date, and then how kind of moving forward, we think that might roll out. So we have a better sense of what that's, what that's about. And then we can again, talk about the timing, the additional money implementation, and the auditing requirements that we anticipate, and then get some feedback from the board. So with that, Captain Franzoso, would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. Well, first, thank you to the Town Board for allowing me the opportunity to come and talk a little bit about our request. So since the, the, the end of December, we obtained all the approvals through New York State to do COVID testing here in our facility and also in the community at large, whether it's at individuals' homes or at certain events, traveling to, you know, Town Hall, I think we've been to a few times, and a few other places for testing. Vaccines started much later for us. We were really not sure where any of these programs were going to go when we first went to the state and got approval, but we started with the, the testing phase, and that seemed to be pretty successful when it first started. New York State was able to allot us the antigen test. So what those do is it's a very simple card stock test, which is used for surveillance testing, which is what a lot of the school districts use, what organizations use just to, to monitor COVID outbreaks or infection in their workplace and in their schools or anything like that. After that program started and we saw that it was successful, New York State then opened up to us through the Department of Health, the ability to offer molecular testing. So it was a little bit more advanced. It is similar to a PCR test, which I'm sure everyone hears about all the time through various travel entities or workplace to come back to work, or the schools even. You know, they really wanted a higher caliber test to ensure that people were not sick with COVID and then spreading it elsewhere. So Ovac went to the state. We got approvals for doing the molecular testing. I think that was in March of this year, which was great. The state was able to give us, I think, just over 3,000 tests for free, which are molecular tests through Abbott. They also gave us the machine that we would need to run the test on a loan basis through the Wadsworth Lab, which is New York State's Department of Health lab for testing. So the state, through all of our allocations, we have just about run out. And now we are into the, a few boxes that Ovac had purchased in anticipation for the state telling us that they no longer had tests available, the molecular test that is. And we are just about at the point where we, as an organization, needed to make a determination whether we wanted to continue this service for the town and the village, the schools, the community at large, or whether or not we would, you know, charge individuals or what really the, the right route would be. I think in talking to Dana and Victoria, thought maybe, let's see if this would be an available option. So we put together some numbers to continue testing for the, for the community. We've seen now over the last couple of weeks that our testing requests and appointments have been overbooked, have gone outside of our typical two-day-per-week testing days. We've pretty much testing five days a week right now. And the amount of tests that we're going through is close to somewhere to 75 to 100 tests per week, depending on what's going on in the community. So we wrote, we put together a proposal for six months to continue this molecular testing, which again is the higher caliber test, which is similar to the PCR, which does allow individuals at school, students to go back to, back to school the next day if they left with a headache or a sore throat or runny nose or anything to that effect. We've also seen that it was effective for those who are traveling, especially on the Canadian border. We've seen that this is one of the few tests that are accepted by the government on the border for Border Patrol. We've also seen that this testing be accepted for a lot of businesses that are local, because they really wanted to make sure that, you know, their individuals coming back are, are negative prior to exposing anybody else. So with that, we kind of said six months is probably a pretty good window. Obviously, we, nobody knows where time will go and how busy things will get as we move through the winter months. Last winter was particularly difficult as people are now stuck inside, potentially gathering a little bit more where, you know, people really want to be on the safe side. There's still a group, kind of a, a good consensus of people who are not vaccinated or, you know, unable to be vaccinated for various reasons. And, you know, continuing testing on the molecular level provides a little bit more security for them and their families. We are one of the few places in our region that are offering this test on a fairly regular basis. A lot of like doctor's offices or other facilities, you know, typically when you go in, will request a co-pay or they'll request some sort of doctor's visit to go alongside of a COVID test. Ovac is in a very unique situation where, yes, we do provide care and we do bill insurance, but the way that we're set up with the majority of the insurance companies is to provide 911 emergency ambulance transportation. And anything outside of that doesn't necessarily get reimbursed on the typical model that doctors' offices or pharmacies would see. That's one of the reasons why we've continued to kind of look at, at different ways in order to, you know, provide the testing. We saw that, you know, some people don't want to go to the doctor's office and sit there for, you know, an hour for a full visit or an exam and then be charged a co-pay and have to go through a COVID test. So, I mean, that's kind of where things have led us to today. We have been able to secure with Abbott directly, who's the manufacturer of the tests, a discounted rate for purchasing those tests, which is great. And also the molecular machine that we would need, we would actually be able to get one on loan if we purchased one. So, you know, that would then increase our capability of testing pretty much double since each test takes a molecular machine to do, and it's about 15 minutes per. So now we can do two at once as opposed to just one at a time. So we, we thought that it might be a variable, a valuable option to bring to the town and village to see if this would be something that would be covered under the ARPA recovery funds and something that the town and village would be interested in providing to our community. Unfortunately, we're pretty much tapped out with where we can go with funding to cover just especially the tests. We have been covering the cost of the labor since the labor, some of the labor, we are eligible to get reimbursed through some of the federal reimbursement programs. Unfortunately, we are seeing that the majority of these programs are taking a very long time to come back with what is eligible and what's not eligible, what will be reimbursed and what won't be. I think our first eligible request to the government, sorry. Ambulance is on a call shortly before this. They, we, we are still waiting. I think our last submission was just about a year ago to the, to the DR 4480, which is the Declaration for Reimbursement Through New York State. So we are still waiting a year out now from that reimbursement program, just to see if we'll even get any of those funds. So, you know, looking for some sort of grant upfront to help us sustain some of these testing options is the route that we're hoping to take. Hopefully, that has answered some questions about the testing specific. For vaccinations, we started doing vaccinations, what we thought would be homebound only back in April, turned into much more than what we had imagined. We have administered just over 3,800 doses since we started, which is really phenomenal when we look back and see all of the people that we are able to connect with, especially in our community. Some of the, the local groups like Padres Espanos has really helped us with connecting with individuals who might not have gotten vaccinated at some of the traditional places like doctor's offices, and they were able to come to our building or we were able to go to them down at their facility down on Spring Street. So we've really unknowingly kind of took, took forward steps into protecting our community with testing and with vaccinations, and it has definitely far exceeded our expectations. I think when I was first approached about it, it was like, hey, let's do whoever's homebound, who couldn't get out of their homes, and we've done more pop-up locations. I think when I was first approached about it, it was like, hey, let's do whoever's homebound who couldn't get out of their homes and we've done more pop-up locations, whether it's the Austin farmer's market, whether it's here in our building at least two times a week, if not more, and so on and so forth. So, you know, definitely with the the town, the town support, we've been able to pull off quite a bit to make sure that our community stayed stayed vaccinated, stayed tested, stayed healthy and continue what we what we've set out to do, which is, you know, keep everyone protected and healthy.
That's incredible. Like, I mean, thirty-eight hundred is ten percent of our total town general community. That's pretty incredible. So, thank you for that and thank you for making vaccinations and testing so accessible and easy for people. And I think that that's one of the biggest pieces of it is the ease of which people can actually count on you at Ovac to either administer a test or vaccination and and, you know, with a smile and and making people feel comfortable too. So I think that that's, you know, that goes a long way. And, you know, again, people from our community who are members of Ovac and we're just very, I know we're all very appreciative of that. So thanks for that explanation and I'm going to just open it up to my town board colleagues for questions about, let's just, we'll just stick with questions from Nick right now and then we can talk more generally about the allocations that are, you know, some of the recommendations and what everybody's thinking about that.
Uh, Nick, how much is the machine? That you're looking to buy one, get one free?
The machine was just about just under seven thousand dollars.
Okay.
Is able to give a nice little printout as to whatever what the results are and it's by a certified calibrated machine, so.
Okay. And um, I saw in the possibilities for funding hazard pays and can a, I mean, I know EMTs and paramedics are getting paid a little more nowadays. So can a salary, I mean, is a salary increase part of your thing or you're just looking strictly at testing right now?
Uh, this request was strictly at testing. For now, I think that through some of the other eligible programs that the government is offering might actually allow us some availability and some flexibility with covering the costs of our EMTs and paramedics and even some sort of increases as we move forward. I know like Health and Human Services is about to release their fourth round of funding, which helps with shortfalls and and added expenses that we've had over the last four quarters. So unfortunately, it's the stuff in the past and nothing for the future, but we are continuing to look at different ways in which we can offer, you know, more incentives. EMS as a whole in Westchester County is is kind of in a place where, you know, a lot of EMTs and paramedics work multiple jobs and we are one of the fortunate agencies that we don't have as many staffing issues as others, which, you know, I'm proud of the steps that the town has made over the last, I think it's now twelve years or thirteen years since the taxing tax district was in place to secure professional services to ensure that the readiness of the ambulance is available to its residents. And that's gone a long way. I I really hope that other communities follow in the footsteps of the town and the Mid Hudson Ambulance District for that because I know that that is one of the few ways in which we have been so successful over the years when we've seen other agencies, you know, really filing for bankruptcy or talking about merging and talking about closing just because they can't meet the demands of their community. So, you know, I do thank the town board for that.
Yeah, I do know a lot of agencies are having a hard time finding a EMTs and paramedics. So it's, you know, credit to your leadership that you've been able to maintain an environment where people want to work and people feel we're a top-notch ambulance corps, which of course we are to mostly impart to, you know, to your leadership. Um, anyway, I I do think want to mimic Dana and thank you for all that you've done. I think that our community has been a lot safer and a lot healthier because the testing's available because of vaccines are available and that's in no small, small part due to your efforts and the efforts of your team. So, thank you and I'm all for funding you and getting more testing whatever you need.
Any other?
I don't have so much a question as a comment, just echoing what Liz and Dana are saying. My staff has utilized the testing services, as you know, quite a bit and it's been really good for us to be able to quickly go in, get tested, have peace of mind, be able to get back to work. So I I think Ovac has just been delivering a vital service to the community and I've also been sending tenants and other folks in the community and everyone has had a really positive experience. So thank you for that and I absolutely wholeheartedly am for you getting the funding you need to continue that service.
Thank you.
Anybody else for questions for for Nick?
I I hear I have a question. The machine, the seven thousand dollar machine. Once, uh, and we pray that it someday get be over. Is this the testing for the temperature tester?
So this machine is specific to actually a few things. Abbott is one of the few companies that has designed some equipment that is that is able to handle multi-platforms. So it does COVID molecular testing. It is also capable of flu testing. It is also capable of RSV testing. So, you know, flu A and B and then RSV. So, you know, those are just a few of the added bonuses that come associated with this machine that hopefully in the coming months, if not, you know, more with working with, you know, Phelps Hospital and our community paramedicine program that we will be able to continue to offer those as well to the community for, you know, whatever, whatever the cost may be or however those end up being reimbursed. I'm not too sure on the cost of those particular tests, but luckily the platform is, you know, multi, multi-use that the machine is capable of of doing multiple things. So I think that once, you know, as we move into the flu season, that that is something that's been on our mind is to figure out how we can also do flu vaccines and COVID vaccines at the same time. I know boosters are on the horizon for those that will qualify. I think we have an ongoing list already of of individuals that are looking for as soon as it's FDA and CDC approved and approved by New York State's independent panel that we could then start offering those as well and just be a convenient option, just especially since, you know, one of the, one of the big benefits we've had over the year, the the pandemic and even through the years is that we are capable of taking our equipment on the road and setting up pretty much wherever we need to to, you know, assist the community. And I think that that's been an added bonus that, you know, Phelps Hospital has seen, Northern Westchester Hospital has seen, and I think a few of our other local local groups have really taken that and and run with it because, you know, we have those capabilities to work in a vehicle. We have the capabilities of, you know, showing up with a crew and being able to help those who are homebound and and unable to get out for for testing, whether it's COVID, whether it'll be flu soon, whether it'll be RSV and anything to that effect. So, hopefully that machine will will prove to become a a good asset to, you know, the health and safety of our community, not just for COVID, but for the other, the other tests as well.
Just to clarify, i- is that like, is it a nasal swab and then is that what you're doing a nasal swab and then you're putting the whatever, the little tube with the liquid into a machine?
Yep. So so what the this particular machine does, it's a two-part. So it's, it takes the, there's a solution that gets heated up. So it's a nucleic acid amplification test. So what happens is in order for it to be amplified, the sample is heated in a solution and then drawn up into two pipettes and then it is placed into another cartridge, which is then refracted by light and the machine is able to really look for small traces of vaccine of COVID or any of the other things that viruses that are out there that we would test for. So, you know, it's, it's a definitely a far more advanced solution than what the state was providing in the beginning for free and what they're still going to provide for free for just surveillance testing, but.
So you go in for your COVID test and you find out you have the flu? Is that how it would work?
So it would be a separate test, but it would be a very similar one. So it is just a nasal swab sent into a solution and then, you know, put in through the two cartridges and then the machine does its test.
My my concern was, as long as we don't put it, you know, use it would, let's say, six months and then we put it on the shelf. As long as it can be used for something else, that's great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilman Meyer, any questions for?
No questions. Just keep up the great work and thanks for everything you do for the community.
I do, I do want to point out, I know we're going to talk a little bit about the other suggestions or thoughts for spending. What what Nick was saying about other, you know, other grant, other money, uh, streams of rep of other potential revenue streams that could offset or grant streams that could offset some of these costs. That is probably also true at some point for SCADA. We don't know a hundred percent if it's true, but it's possible that the new spending from the federal government may include infrastructure. So, you know, we're kind of, we're making, we're making this proposal now because it's something that we know is going to greatly improve the you know, the town's functionality specifically for infrastructure and and infrastructure is one of the items, you know, water and sewer infrastructure is one of the buckets that we can utilize, but just the same way that Nick was saying, you know, there might be other funds that could that could help offset. What I think is, you know, interesting about Nick is he's really at the point right now where, you know, they're sort of like up against a wall in terms of knowing if they should be ordering more tests or not. So if we decide, we're not deciding anything tonight, but if we discuss nothing else, I'd like to discuss at least the timing of maybe prioritizing his request since we do have money in, you know, in our account now that we could turn over for that purpose. And as long as we are clear that that is legitimate use of those funds and, you know, we would of course double check and but we believe that it is, you know, that it does certainly qualify. Then it seems like that might be sort of jumped to the top of the line in terms of how we're thinking about, you know, spending these ARPA funds because at least they could get started either, you know, with the machine and or with ordering additional tests for our community and really supporting the safety and health of our community. So it's, I want to put that, put that out there. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to add that sort of to that point. I think another thing that, you know, we certainly should consider taking action on sooner rather than later is deciding if we do want to hire this consultant from, you know, Engage O'Connor Davies to assist us with the reviewing, reviewing and monitoring and things like that, because I think that will sort of facilitate making sure that if we do spend, give money to Ovac, that we're doing it in the proper and and right way. So I do know we have a, you know, engagement letter that the board can potentially consider it its next legislative session. I think that would also be sort of steps one at the same time to make sure that we're, you know, doing everything as we should, especially since, you know, everything's a little uncertain right now.
And then again, that would then potentially allow us, you know, if we decide, okay, we're gonna, you know, we're going to allocate some of these funds now early on and we don't necessarily decide how we want to spend all the other funds or, you know, some of them, but not all of them, you know, we could always decide that we want to spend, go back and, you know, allocate more towards Ovac. I'm sorry, go ahead. Christie, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I I Victoria sent me their engagement letter from O'Connor Davies that they circuit, they sent to the town last week and just for the board's information, it seems like it's very much more of a, you know, run things by them type thing. At least that's the concept, the way it's being proposed. So in in exactly the type of situation that we're discussing now with Ovac, you know, if we just want to run something by them or get their thoughts or say, hey, or or do you think we're good with this? The town could go to them and utilize them on an as-needed basis. Um, the the fee schedule is hourly, so it's not like you're committing a flat fee or a certain amount of money to it upfront. It's basically just based upon the way it's proposed as as long and as often as you need them.
Right. So the idea would be for us to sort of like, you know, allocate, like soft allocation of, okay, we know we're going to just sort of set aside and not spend of the allocated monies, this, you know, five to eight thousand dollars so that we could have them to tap as a resource and to use for any, you know, sort of auditing types of questions, like make sure that we're in compliance types of questions you know, with them along the way. Again, we're not committing the full amount of funds. We're just sort of setting it aside as we're not going to spend down these funds now because we know we want to make sure that we're doing, you know, that we're getting the the expert you know, advice that we need.
All right. So from what Chrissy says, they're going to be the ones where we say, do you feel like these projects are the ones? And they'll say, yeah, we think that's good, but they're not actually going to be doing the proposal, the documentation. And will they stand with us if it's deemed that something we spent it on was not actually something allocated? Will they, you know, come to that, write a letter, whatever?
I just want to say.
I'm asking. I'm, it's a lot of money.
Absolutely. No, they're not. They're not. Well, they're not taking any legal responsibility, certainly. They're not, they're not, they're not going, falling on a sword in any way for for their advice. I think that they're, you know, go ahead. I'm gonna let Victoria.
Professional standards of what they would provide when they do the audit.
Yeah, and I just want to throw out that, you know, we met with the the woman from O'Connor Davies who, and her name is escaping me right now, but who is sort of going to be the the point person on this and she's working with municipalities and entities across the country. So I think sort of the key feature about this whole funding source is that every town, village, practically county, state in the entire country is having the same conversations we're having right now. And as requests start funneling through the federal government, we're going to start to find out and learn a little bit more about what they like, what they don't like, what works, what doesn't work. And I think having somebody who really is going to have their pulse on what's going back and forth through the treasury is really going to be beneficial to us. So, so yes, they may not, you know, fall on a sword for us, but I think that they're going to be monitoring what's going on across the entire country and give us really sound advice as we, you know, do our reporting and and go through this whole process.
And and beyond that, the the reporting part of it, I think that's the other piece where we're going to count on them for advice and how are we going to book the expenditures? And, you know, making sure that we are able to come back and sort of prove it to to the US Treasury when we're expected to file, you know, our our annual reports as to how we're spending it, that we're counting for everything correctly. So, you know, they're also, obviously there are auditors, so they're also making sure that, you know, we're booking things correctly. And I think that that's also a very critical point as to how they can be or, you know, what, why we would count on them to be the right consultants for that aspect of it.
Yeah, given that the town already has this relationship with them, that they already know how everything works. They already have a good working relationship with Dale and it seems like a seamless transition to just have this additional service as needed.
Okay, I like the as needed part. Yeah, the, I like the idea that they have their finger on the pulse as they're working with a lot of other communities. They might even be able to give us guidance and, hey, this was reimbursed, something we didn't think of. So.
Yeah, suggestions too.
Yeah, the five to eight thousand dollars was arranged that our controller provided us, that she thought would be a reasonable amount to like, like as the supervisor said, sort of set aside and say, okay, in our brains, we're going to leave this here and help us through the process over the next couple of years with this funding.
And Victoria, correct me if I'm wrong, but the village is going to be doing this or is going to be considered doing this as well, right?
Yes, the village also did receive an engagement letter and they're they're going to be considering as well. I don't know what their final decision is, but.
But that may also reduce costs conceivably because, you know, you all share a finance department and so information they provide as it relates to one municipality will likely be useful for both.
Yes, very true.
Absolutely true.
Sorry, my other question or isn't to do with the ambulance corps, it's to do with, I know we are looking at multiple sources of providing broadband down to the Riverfront Park. And I see that that's a possibility to be funded in this. SCADA money as well, or the, I mean, the ARPA money as well. So. I think we should look at that as well.
I'm just going to stop sharing so we can see each other. Sorry, that's getting a little hard.
And we can definitely look at that. We're still waiting for to hear back from the county and it's not. Honestly, they've been asking, they've asked us for some more details which we have to provide them and. It's a little bit complicated with Verizon and how exactly they would implement the broadband. So. We're still waiting to hear back from Verizon so we can get back to the county so that the county can get back to us with an answer. And I think.
Somebody saw, all right, somebody saw them digging in the parking lot. And said, oh, congratulations, you you're getting internet down here, which. I was unaware of and not really sure, but you might want to reach out to Verizon and see if they're actually doing something. They said they were pulling the lines kind of out by where the new. Garden is.
Okay, we'll look into that.
We haven't actually tried to get an answer, so I have, I haven't heard back, but you know, we don't have had email for a couple of days, so it's possible it's sitting in. In the email world of waiting to get back to me, but. I I will certainly follow up with that with Verizon on that and hopefully. If Verizon can provide the the basics and they had originally offered to. Actually pay for that and ultimately I think it's going to end up benefiting the boat and canoe club too, just FYI. I do think that. That, you know, the county is going to approve that service, so. You know, that'll be covered by that, by that, by the CDBG grant, COVID grant.
And I think there are also a couple of other funding sources that exist out there. I know we've spoken to a couple of people who are really in this. World that there may be some other opportunities for. You know, some partnerships between the town, village, perhaps the school district to accomplish that in some other ways too. So again, it's it's kind of nice that this ARBA money is. Floating out there for us for a little while because we can play around with some of these ideas as they come along and. You know. Can be a little fungible, which is good.
Yeah, I I can't tell you how often I get asked the question by people in the park, like, how is there no wifi here? I want to work by the river. So.
Yeah, well, it's it's definitely in the works. It's not pretend. So we're we're hoping that we can get there sooner rather than later, but. If you saw Verizon digging, I'm guessing it's for to test to kind of figure out what which direction they should be going and what they might be able to do. Without having to do too much digging, otherwise there is going to, it is going to involve some. Excavation. In the road and it's complicated because of who owns what piece of the road and where. So it starts under the bridge and goes out to. A little bit past the garden. So to be continued when I get some more information on that. But meanwhile, I do want to just talk about the SCADA system a little bit. I was hoping that, you know, we could have Andy Tease talk a little bit more about it, but he's out. This week on a. I think he's at a convention or something and I a hundred percent sure, but. The system, if anybody's been to the water treatment plant that they have there where they're able to monitor all of the different. Lines and acts. Is very similar to what this, that's basically the system that we're talking about for the sewer pump, the lift stations. And to be able to have that, you know. Live monitoring would really go a long way to, you know. Avoid risk, like risk avoidance and reducing our risk considerably for having any. Kind of potential overflow stoppages or anything, anytime some something was about to happen. That could escalate, we would actually be able to see it. We do still have to work out some of the details because it probably would be a component. Where we would need to reach out to the village to see if we could maybe, if that's something that we could maybe install with at the water. Treatment plant and we haven't had that discussion yet. So I, you know, I'd be remiss if we said that we had all the pieces in place, but it's something that we think. You know, would be helpful to 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 everybody and it's something that we actually. Are we're working towards anyway. So this is money that would basically offset us either having to go out to borrow bond. To dip into fund balance, et cetera, to pay for this large capital project. And we think again, like it it really would be money well spent. A major infrastructure improvement if we could put something like this in place. Again, it's possible that we may find out in the not too distant future, like before it's encumbered or spent. That we could tap a different source to get the money and that it wouldn't be hard to do so. And if in fact, that's the case. Then that would free up this money to be spent in a different direction, but you know, we at least like to have. A feeling from the board that this would be a good use of these funds to to start. You know, starting, start to get some more. Designs maybe and. Information together so that we could consider going out to bid. So any any thoughts on?
Designs for the system, I mean.
I'm guessing it has to be designed. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I, you know, again, wishing.
Was that each, yeah, my impression was that each. Pump station has monitors and also cameras. And it measures the flow, you know, the input, the output. And all of that, and it detects leaks pretty well, which is very nice to control. You know. Stop any instances immediately before they really get to the river or any of our drinking water sources or any other. Sources. I mean, I'm pretty sure it's a pretty straightforward design. You should attach it to the to the stations. But.
I'm just not a hundred percent sure. I have to, that's as, as I said, I wish that we had Andy here so he could talk about a little bit more. He did just give us a ballpark essentially. What he believes that the total system would cost.
All right, it's a consideration.
Anybody else have thoughts on the matter of other suggestions? We have one from Councilwoman Feldman for broadband. Is there anybody else who has any thoughts for? Other expenditures that, you know, we've been talking about maybe or. That that come to mind as part of these buckets that you think would be welcome, we should be considering or different direction.
I wouldn't hate looking at our. Testing our stormwater runoff and and streams and seeing if we could find any. Equal leaks either. I don't know if that counts, but.
It's not considered sewer infrastructure, so you know, the when. I was on a webinar with the Association of Towns and they gave some guidance of there's these clean water revolving fund and wastewater revolving fund grants. And they sort of said, that's a great guide for, you know, what might be eligible under ARPA to sort of look at those funding sources and. Unfortunately, I don't think stormwater. Qualifies as wastewater and sewer infrastructure. We'll have to keep, keep on looking for something else in that respect.
Now, I'm sure we have plenty of projects that that fit into these categories. I think, you know, the ambulance is probably the most important ones in my eyes because they've really. Been doing so much for our community and and keeping our health and welfare, which is seems to be where this money is supposed to be targeted.
And also I just want to note about the lost revenue calculation, you know, that. Is sort of helpful to us because it kind of just comes back into our operating budget. So it's going to help us. Address some of the projects that we may not have been able to do. Because of COVID or you sort of put off because there's a lot of uncertainties due to COVID. So, you know, that's also a role that O'Connor Davies will hopefully. Play in helping to make sure that we're calculating the lost revenue accurately. Because it is a little complicated and then that just sort of comes right back to us and. Even though it's not necessarily being allocated to, for example, projects in our parks or anything like that, they can help that that funding can help support. Some of these projects and we may be holding off on a little bit because of COVID uncertainty. So that's, that's also going to go a long way.
I do have a lot of confidence in Dale, though. I bet they find that she got it right.
Yeah, agreed.
They look at it.
It's quite, it's, it's, it's very interesting. I don't know if the treasury thought about towns with cemetery funds, though. That's one of the big questions. I don't think they anticipated us, so we surprise them.
Yes, we will see if we're in good instead, in good stead with that and if not, then we'll, again, we'll come back. And discuss, but for now, if if there, is there anybody else who wants to comment on any of these buckets? Yes, no? Going in the right direction?
I think they look good and I like that we're leaving some money because we have time to spend it to figure out if. You know, other grants come up or other priorities come up. So I'm good with it.
And anybody else? You good with it? Okay.
Good as well.
All right, fantastic. Okay, so with that, I'm going to then close our conversation on ARPA and we're going to. Just give you a quick update on some grants that are, we have a couple of deadlines in September and October for some exciting projects. I'm going to turn it back over to Victoria to review these couple of opportunities. You're hoping to have our town planner on also to add to the discussion, but she had a. A personal health emergency that she had to deal with and she's okay. And hopefully everybody else in her family is too and we'll keep you posted. But she wasn't able to join us. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Ray Catrally.
Yeah, and certainly we can relay any questions if we don't have the answers. It's not liking me. Okay, there we go, grants update. So the first one that I'm going to talk a little bit about is due for us in. On October 20th, so it's coming up soon. And these are the Nicerda Clean Energy Communities Grant. So. As the town board and the public may remember, we did have a presentation from some folks at Nicerda. A couple of months ago, I think about the Nicerda Clean Energy Communities Program. Which is a program that basically incentivizes municipalities to take action on some of these high impact clean energy actions. And also introduced in this first, the second round, this is the second round of this program. They also introduced this concept of community campaigns. So the town was able to, did complete a number of these high impact actions. As well as three community campaigns, which was the Energy Smart, Energy Smart Homes Program. Grid wards and Community Solar with the help of Sustainable Westchester. Which made us able to achieve some of the grants, grant funding that was available to municipalities. And we actually right now have a total of. Forty thousand dollars in grants available that we can spend. We also anticipate getting another ten thousand dollar grant sometime when the, I think we're still waiting for the Community Solar. Community campaign to close out. So that may be a couple of months down the line. But right now we have forty thousand dollars sort of for us to play around with a little bit. And the reason why I say play around with a little bit is that this grant program, sort of similar to ARPA. Is does not have very concrete guidelines, like many of the grant applications we apply for. So essentially applicants, especially if you're in the higher amount of grant funding like we are with forty thousand dollars, you do need to first propose. A clean energy project for funding. And the application provides a couple of examples like solar, electric vehicles. And what I have on this slide here, but also you can come up with a custom project. So it is, it is, you can get a little creative here. So the project that we would like to consider submitting for this. Application is for heating and cooling upgrades at the at the Cedar Lane Art Center. So we just decided that this was probably the best project for this particular source of grant funding. Because a lot of the other project types that you see here, there are a lot of other sources of funding for. So as we sort of looked at. Our various projects that we have that sort of fall in the clean energy. Bucket. And we also did so with this company Millennium Strategies that we've started working with in August to help us with strategic planning for our grant applications. The one project or the one type of project that is really challenging to. Get grant funding for, especially with the size buildings that we have are building upgrades, any sort of heating, cooling, energy efficiency upgrades. Really challenging when, you know, the buildings that the town owns are small, like the Cedar Lane Art Center. Or the Ryder Park Caretaker's Cottage or the Dale Cemetery Caretaker's Cottage. We don't really have very large buildings where you might qualify for. Other types of rebates and discounts and things like that through a NIPA or a Nicerda or something like that. So. This seems like a good opportunity to take advantage of a bucket of funding that will really hopefully. Go a pretty long way in completing this project. We did ask. Andy Tease again to give us a sort of ballpark estimate for what this project would cost, and he does believe it will come in around forty thousand dollars. So this project would, this grant grant funding would hopefully fully fund that project. And it also may make us eligible for earning future points as part of this program and getting future grants, which would be even better. So that is this first grant funding source, this this grant application. So we, you know, when we found out we got the money, we had three months to apply. So we have to submit our application by October 20th. And this seems like the best project and the best opportunity for that project. So if the board has any questions about this particular project now before I move on to the next one.
Just be, I just, I do want to let everybody know that, you know, we have. Reached out and spoken to Con Ed, NIPA about solar opportunities on our. Parking lots, on our buildings. And we haven't gotten very far. The last call I got was a couple of days ago about. Battery energy storage at at some of our facilities. So that's something that we are going to continue to explore and gotten a couple of calls about that recently and. I think that one was from Con Ed. So we can, again, we're going to continue to talk to. About some of these things. We do have a lot of opportunities to. Look into them, but we haven't been successful with landing any of them in the past. Again, certainly solar at in our own town buildings and. And, you know, again, building upgrades even for, you know, the the caretaker's cottage at Ryder because it's not open to the public. It's not eligible for and for these, for these funds even. So it's, that's really, you know, been tricky where we want, you know, we said, well, we really want to do a demonstration project at at. At the caretaker's cottage. Well, it's not open to the public, so you can't use it. So. That's, that's where we've gotten stuck in trying to do some of these upgrades with help from grant funding. So with that, I just, you know, again, open it up for questions, discussion, thoughts.
And I will just throw out there, when we we did receive a fifty thousand dollar grant from the same funding source in the last round and we did use that. To support the North State Road Bike Lane Project, which was. Also, again, like sort of a tough nut crack in terms of other types of funding. So, you know, it's been really great when the this funding opportunity comes around because we can. Get a little creative and and get projects done that are not typically able to get funded elsewhere.
Anybody?
So this will be the geothermal heat at the Cedar Lane Art Center.
I think it's geothermal, it's air sports heat pump.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I understand.
Okay, okay, great. Yes, otherwise good to go. All right. So with that.
Nope.
Anybody else? Okay, can you stop, stop sharing percept just so I can see everybody? You can't see everybody at once, otherwise, just want to make sure. I'm not missing out on anybody. Okay, everybody else good? Thumbs up? Great, fantastic. All right. So in that case, can I have a motion to adjourn?
No, we have more grant. Forget this grant.
That's gracious, sorry. I can't believe I'm forgetting. So our our transportation.
The Cadillac grant.
Cadillac, right, the Cadillac grant. So this is the. Now I can't remember what TAB stands for. It just went out of my head. Transportation Alternatives Program. So this is like a federally funded. Program that comes through New York State every couple of years and they skipped a year because of COVID. This is the big money that we've basically been told by New York State DOT, this is what we should be applying for. To address the Cadillac route identified in the Mowood Austin Go Program. Along Route 133 corridor. We we've looked, we've applied for other resources as well for this. Which we don't believe have come through for federal funding through Congressman Jones's office. But we are hopeful that we can apply for the. Five million dollar grant for design engineering and. Construction funding for part of not, it wouldn't, it wouldn't cover the entire. Route would be a phased in plan, so it would be probably. Fee, you know, phase one of the construction, but we would be looking to do the design and engineering for the entire corridor, I believe.
Yeah.
Right. So I'm going to turn it over to Victoria to for continue.
Yeah, so, so again, this is the the big, the Cadillac route from the Mogo Plan and.
And as supervisor said, this really is the funding source that we've been waiting for. The New York State DOT was very excited about this project and did complete a feasibility evaluation as part of the Mogo planning process, um, which sort of set forth what the the corridor is and, um, you know, some potential options for, um, for, for, uh, making this corridor bike and pedestrian friendly. Uh, so the TAP grant, the maximum amount that we can apply for is five million dollars. There is a one point two five million dollar match. And we have approached our partners sort of on this project, Village of Austin and Town of Newcastle, so that this can hopefully be a partnership between the three municipalities to achieve this really impressive project. And as the supervisor said too, it is likely that this amount will not cover the full cost of construction for the entire route. But we are hopeful that it will cover the cost of engineering and design for the entire route and some sort of fees to to focus on the sections in the towns of Austin and Newcastle. Because, um, you know, when you get into the village, there are a lot of different constraints from parking and things like that that might hinder actual, you know, road improvements. But also when you get into the village, it's a little bit, it's more walkable. It's more bike and pedestrian friendly because they have sidewalks and a little bit slower speeds and the cars and things like that. So, um, it seems like a logical place to sort of phase construction. Um, and we are working with Valerie Manostroff, Nelson Koworke, he is in her engineering team to develop this grant application, which is due next week. So I'm going sort of backwards in time here. Um, and again, just so this is a map of the corridor and although it doesn't highlight the exact cost of each section, but it does kind of highlight, okay, where are things a little bit more expensive, a little less expensive and different constraints along the whole corridor, which extends right here is the intersection at Route nine. We have also discussed potentially extending the corridor all the way to the train station to really achieve the goal that Mogo set forth, which was to connect downtown Village of Austin and the train station to the North County Railway, which is here at the intersection at one hundred and one thirty-three, um, which is also a priority intersection for the Town of Newcastle. So the scope of the project will also evaluate that intersection and make sure that it's, uh, safe for people to kind of come through this corridor to the North County Railway Corridor, which was also recently improved. So, um, there's definitely, um, you know, want more community use of that facility now. Um, and so I just want to show the board again, the grant is going to be for design and engineering. So this is in no way set in stone. But we we have worked closely with Sam Schwartz Engineers in the past on some bike and pedestrian projects, including the North State Road corridor. So we had asked them several, several months ago to kind of start help brainstorming with us, thinking about this project and how we might move it forward. And they took some of the cross-sections from the feasibility evaluation that the DOT did and, you know, sort of starting to illustrate what could be. This cross-section is the section in the Village of Austin. So as you see, there's no adjustment to the road width, stays curb to curb, stays the same. And there's just some changes in the markings where you can preserve the parking and preserve sharrows. So as we said, with phase construction, this is something that's relatively simple to implement and may not require an extensive amount of construction funding. Then when you get past Pleasantville Road and more into the towns, uh, towns of Austin and Newcastle section, there's more room to or more flexibility to expand the road and add more dedicated bike lanes and continuation of the sidewalk. This is of the same segment, which is the segment from Donald Lane to Route 100. So again, in the towns passing in Newcastle, um, where it's sort of showing two different options, where you maintain that sidewalk that sort of ends off at Donald Lane now on 133 with bike lanes on either side of the road, um, or perhaps eliminating the sidewalk if that's, you know, more conducive to the, to the feel of that section of the corridor um, and and instead just with paved shoulders for the, um, with, for the, for the bike lanes. So, um, again, these are very, very early concepts, but just to share with the board and with the public, this is sort of where we're going. We're going for it. Um, and hopefully this funding would be to help take this sort of concept in these cross-sections into real designs, into real considerations for the infrastructure on the road and hopefully phase in construction, most likely in this segment where, um, you know, really some significant improvements are going to be needed to to make it accommodate bicyclists and pedestrians safely.
So one option is this sidewalk, starting at Donald or continuing at Donald Lane all the way down to Route 100? Plus a bike lane?
That's, that, that's a concept. I don't know exactly what that will look like. And that's hopefully what the five million dollars will get us is to really hone in on that. But yes, that was, um, sort of a cross-section that has been played with, um, before to to add some additional pedestrian access for the corridor.
And there will absolutely be more public engagement for all of these different routes. This isn't just something that's going to get decided from on high. It's going to in involve, you know, additional public engagement for all of these concepts.
Okay, and that five million also includes engineering, like structure work and some paving, right? Not just engineering.
And some construction, yes, it wouldn't probably not be able to pay for the the whole corridor, but.
Not the whole corridor, but it's not just engineering for five.
Correct.
No, no.
It's a big dream.
It's a big dream. It's a big project, but you know.
Just to remind everybody, this started out basically, um, you know, when somebody complained that the DOT was, was not going to address the safety of Route 133. So the idea that we can make this into, um, both, um, you know, more of a sort of a complete streets approach, looking at different, all different types of use of this road and make it a safer road for, you know, for all types of users is very tempting because obviously this is one of our most used corridors. And, um, making any of these routes that we that do get used so much safer for both, you know, the idea of people commuting by bike or walking as well as driving is, I think, really, um, you know, critical that we start taking a look at these, uh, how we can achieve these goals. Not only for, um, you know, making it easier for people to have less expensive ways than having to have single passenger vehicles, but also for the environment and also just for the good of our own health. So there's lots of, lots of reasons why we should be moving in this direction and it's, you know, it's slow. We know that, um, and I I was, I think I was recently quoted in an article, I don't know if any of you saw it, I think it was in the River Journal, about, um, you know, cars do still come first in our society. Um, and we need to start shifting that conversation and, uh, you know, it's hard for people to imagine that because we live in a society where cars do come first. But, you know, you have to start somewhere and if, and if we don't start prioritizing other forms of, um, getting from point eight to point B, we're never gonna, we're never gonna change anything.
Yeah, and again, this funding source only comes up every couple of years. And we have certainly heard from, you know, the folks at the DOT, um, folks from Westchester County DOT that this really is the funding source for this project. Um, you know, we've been spending a lot of time these past couple of years trying to look into how to at least further this along to to design and engineering and this seems to be the right funding source. So hopefully, um, you know, we'll have the opportunity to apply this time and hopefully be successful and move the project along.
Questions?
Can't wait to talk to an engineer about how they're going to put a bike lane on that S turn. But aside from that great, great concept.
People bike there anyway, as.
I'm aware, I drive.
We know people bike there anyways. We have to figure out how to make cars understand that, you know, slow down, yield.
And I think even the, um, you know, this concept, you know, some, when, when the DOT was evaluating this, they did try to keep the, um, you know, concepts within what's existing already as best as possible. So I think even this is illustrating, you know, just shifting the road a little bit. You know, I think that there's, there's a lot that can be done if for for the most part in a lot of the areas with what's there already just sort of rethought and and cleaned up a little bit, which is, which is interesting.
All right.
Okay.
Are you going to be supportive of the pipe dream? Great.
Now we're good.
Okay, now then. I was moving on without that. Okay, we've just been talking about this a lot lately. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for advice of counsel?
I moved second.
All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Wonderful. So thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. Next week, we'll be back with a regular meeting continuing in in our Zoom format. So we'll see you then. And remember, pledge to go car free tomorrow. I'll see you walking around. Have a great night.